It's 5:15. I'd like to call this regular meeting to order and recognize everybody in the audience tonight. Would you please stand and recite the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to school board norms. Diane?
Shirley, the board developed norms are to share and respect varied opinions and speak with a united voice once a decision has been reached, to prudently prioritize resources in a student-centric manner that aligns with the district's strategic plan, to exhibit a mindset of continuous improvement through adequate preparation for meetings, and a commitment to board education, and to commit to assessing board effectiveness to ensure high-quality governance for the staff, students, and the community of Jamestown.
Thank you. We have nothing under public communications, any conflicts of interest? None. Moving to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Greg. Second by Gail. Any discussion? Hearing none. Assuming roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving into our regular meeting recognition. Jason, would you like to read that?
Sure. The North Dakota Association of Secondary School Principals would like to acknowledge the principals that have been selected as their region's secondary principal of the year. The NDASSP is divided into six regions in the state of North Dakota. Each region, under the directions of the region director, selected that region's principal of the year. The following are the 2021 NDASSP region principals of the year. Region one, Mr. Steve Morbin from Trenton. Region two, Ms. Katie Croft from Rolette. Region three, Mr. John Strandle from Grand Forks. Region four, Mr. Tyler Sen from Bowman. Region five, Mr. Ryan Hardy from Jamestown. And region six, Dr. Jennifer Fremsted from West Fargo. All of these distinguished principals are now filling out their applications for the honor of being the 2021 North Dakota State Principal of the Year. The NDPOY will be selected in March and announced in the beginning of April 2021. They would then represent North Dakota at the 2021 NASSP National Conference and will be in the running for the 2022 National Principal of the Year. Please congratulate these very deserving individuals for their accomplishments, and good luck to Mr. Hardy as he continues through the selection process.
I don't know if you want to stand up, Ryan, and we'll just give you a hand. Okay, moving on to correspondence. We have none under reports. If it's all right with the board, we'd like to move the educational introduction to education up before Dr. Lex's thing. So Heidi?
Yep.
Oh, wrong Heidi.
All right, so the first week was a pretty easy week. We just went over the syllabus and basically discussed what we would be doing that week. And then into the next week, we moved on to...
Excuse me?
While they're waiting on that, I'll just, you can take a look. And I know it's really small, so hopefully if you get a chance, you can take a look at what we have. But there's a 16-week course, and the girls are going to tell you one of some of the things that we did in each of those areas. But basically, what I looked at was, and I have a slide on that, too. I guess maybe it's the next one, if you want to look at that quick and we'll come back to this one. Very, very small, but just to give you an idea that we have state standards that we have to go with, and we also have college standards. So it is a course that doesn't need the credit requirements, and it was a free-credit course. And we'll skip ahead after a little bit here, too, but if we go back to the dual-credit course listings, the girls can give you an idea of what some of those activities and just maybe some of the highlights of it. We won't go through step-by-step on it.
One of the things that we learned about in this class was brain development and activators. We learned about how the brain works in the different parts of the brain and how that's applied in the classroom. Also, in that week, we also learned about activators, which are activities that are done in the classroom to get students' attention and to get them engaged as we move into learning about the learning goals for that day. We also studied some of the historical roots of education. We took a field trip that week. We went to the Frontier Village, and we went to their classroom there. And we were able to learn about how schools were in the past and how they've adapted and changed as they've moved forward. We've also learned about some educational theorists and what they had to say about education, and what some of their theories were about how children learn and how they develop. This was one of my favorite parts of the course because I'm also taking psychology courses, and the things that I was learning in this course were also things that were mentioned in my psychology course. So I was able to take both of those things, and they kind of co-related to each other.
Riley?
One of the topics I would like to talk about was the current issues week that we took. We took a few weeks for that one, just because we thought that it was important to cover. And some students decided to choose, like, mental and physical health with the classroom, which is big lately, and like, how the pandemic would affect you. We had presentations on that, and we all learned a lot about what we all looked into, which we did extensive research on it. Another thing that I thought was very key to this semester was curriculum and lesson planning, since we would be using that in further teaching courses. We learned about how we could set up online sources of how we could set aside what we would teach and when we would teach it, and how we can best pair things together, which I thought was very, very helpful, because I honestly was questioning that coming into the course, and I wanted to learn about it. I thought that was very interesting. And one of the last things we learned about was effective teaching. That was honestly the one that I had the most fun with, because then I could look at my teachers and see how they're using that, and then I can appreciate it more, and then I can focus on it when I go to be a future educator.
That's what our next slide just had, what our standards were. So again, there's a lot of them. As you can see, we tried to cover. The ones on top are the in-task standards, which are the college ones, and there's 10 total. There was four that we needed to focus on for our educational course. And then the ones below were just for the course. The next slide, please. So at the end of the course, I gave the students a survey, which I like to do, just to get some feedback for my own personal growth. And then we talked about that as, as an educator, reflection is a big part of your job. You teach a lesson, you look back, reflect, see what you have to do to improve. So I wanted to model that as well. So I just picked two questions out of there. The rest were ones to help me grow as a teacher. But the one that I have that has the big orange square was the amount of work that was put into it, and they had, it required a lot. Every single student that was in the class said, yes, it was a lot of work. And then we just brought that up, that, yes, it's a dual-credit, three college credits is what they earned for it. So yes, it's going to take some work. And I like that piece because I know that wasn't their favorite part, because there was a lot of material that we covered. But to give them an idea of this is what a college course is going to be like, there is a lot more expected out of you. So I know that's probably an area that they didn't like all the work, but it does matter, and that's what they're going to have as future educators, too. And then the pie chart that is segregated fairly evenly was the only part that doesn't show is that yellow color, which would be an answer of no. And the question was, do you still want to be an educator? And as you can see, they all still do, or maybe are undecided. But I was really excited that there was no noes. So then the last slide we just have, do you guys have questions for us, or are there things you're wondering that we haven't covered for you?
Are there any questions? Greg?
Sure. So there was no prerequisites, just that we were trying to get them to be juniors and seniors. We had a few extra ones this first year to try out, but normally it'll be a junior-senior course. And with looking at the feedback on the amount of work, I think that'll be a good decision for us to try to keep it with those older ones. We started off with 10, and within the first week, a few went, nope, that's not what we wanted. And I didn't take offense to that. I'm like, I'm glad we found you something that you did not want to do, because I think that's a big part of it, too, of, yes, we have these ones that want to be future educators, but it's also important to understand that, nope, that's a career that I may be not interested. So I was appreciative of those ones that decided not to. But we started with 10, and we ended with seven. Does that answer what you were looking for?
Any other questions for Aaron?
So was this open to both juniors and seniors, then, you said?
Yes. Juniors and seniors are, it's an elective course that a student at Jamestown High School can take.
Any other? Jason?
I just think this is great. And then, you know, in education, we talk a lot about growing from within and whatnot, and that's awesome. And something to consider, and I don't know at what level, but I think it would be also nice and amazing if, to either in, within this course or to follow up this course, if we could do some type of an internship or classroom experience type. I don't know if that was part of it, or if it could be...
That's a great question, and that would be my next logical step as well. So I just did it with Mr. Gaylor. We do have, what is the course they got for you guys who are in that?
Teacher eight.
Teacher eight. I'd also like to see, and maybe this is the opportunity to bring that up, too, to help have that happen, is have that as another logical step of now. Because to me, for me as a teacher, I would love that, since I'm teaching intro, to now have those guys go out and work. And then maybe we meet one day, and we can talk about what took place out there. So to me, it would be a logical progression. But they are getting sometimes, I know Cassidy's working up at the high school with Mrs. Conway, and you're with your mom at those schools. Hopefully it works, also they're at least getting some experience with it. And that is our hope, that yes, and as we take this, let's continue on with that. Obviously, it would be nice if we had other pieces across, but if it's a junior, senior, that would be a nice transition for them. I totally agree with you, and I'd like to see that happen as well.
Any other questions or comments? Rob?
I just want to recognize Mrs. Eckert and Mr. Gaylor. I think this is a great, this has been a great addition to our curriculum and a great course offerings, as Mr. Rohr stated, in our profession. We really have had a decline in the number, the volume of people interested in teaching, and I think this is a great way that we can build up the profession and to help our young people see that this is a wonderful profession, and give them those opportunities to explore. If you look again at the, at, you know, the breakdown of, this is a very in-depth look, obviously, at the profession of education, and it should be. It's a dual-credit class. But I think this gives a really nice overall look at the profession. And so when it comes time to make that decision, people, our young people have a, have a good sense of what it is in, to be a teacher. And just to, I think it's a great opportunity for our kids. I think it's a great opportunity for our district to build from within, and just to provide a greater exploratory option for our students. So I also want to say thank you to our students. You did a great job. Great job representing our student body.
Any other comments or questions? Not, thanks. I have a report, so.
Appreciate your time and allowing us to present for you.
Oh, you're welcome. Moving on to superintendent's report. Rob?
Thank you. You have my written report. It was a lengthy one this month, so I will not read it line by line, so you're welcome. But I will hit the highlights. As you've seen, as every time, I'm sure every time you drive by, like I do, you continue to look at the progress that University of Jamestown is making on our shared project. And those are things that we're continuing to work through, as I've mentioned a lot of, a number of different times. We're really very thankful to our community for supporting. We've been able to raise a great deal of money in a very short period of time. When you consider the $2 million that the district provided, we're just at the $11 million mark, just a little bit short. So when you consider the time span, that's a lot of, that's not a very long time to raise an awful lot of money. But I will say, we're at that tough stage in fundraising. If you've done a lot of fundraising, that last million or that last percentage gets tough. And so, you know, we've strategized around how we can approach that last $700,000, $800,000, and we have some ideas floating around, but that's still, that's going to be a challenge. That might actually be harder and more time-consuming than the first part. But we'll continue to work through. But again, I just continue to come back and say, our ability to raise that kind of money in that period of time really shows that it was the right decision to move forward with the shared project, and it's what our community wanted. Moving into the capital projects, planning and summer projects. The summer projects is something that we're still working on. We've sent out our typical form to get feedback from each of the buildings on far, as far as priority needs. And we're working with consolidated construction, as we talked about before, to work into, marry both of the summer projects and all of our, well, our refinanced dollars, our ESER dollars, and potentially more ESER dollars into that capital projects plan. And so that's a process we're continuing to work for, work through. As you know, Consolidated Construction previously went through the RFP process for, to be a construction manager at risk in 2017. And because of that, with their work with the capital projects planning, and they, they know our district very well, it'd be my recommendation, my recommendation, continue and extend that agreement through this capital projects plan. And the work associated with that capital projects plan, I think that would be the most expeditious for that. Speaking of ESER funding, you know, from my, from my thoughts, I've sent to you before the 15 different allowable expenditures in the ESER funds. I think it even more simplistically, not just in those 15 allowable activities. I think of it as three categories within, you know, conceptually. One being newer continuation of needs resulting from the pandemic. One of the, one thing that it is important to note is that in ESER funding, 20% needs to be for, to cover what they call learning loss. This is where that learning loss piece would fit in, newer continuing needs resulting from the pandemic. We know that there's social-emotional needs. We know that we've had academic needs that we need to continue to support. That might be, for example, our, we brought a new EL instructor onboard because we knew that there was a need. That, that could fit there. Like I said, we know we have social-emotional needs. If we wanted to provide additional supports for students throughout the duration of ESER, we certainly could do that as well, and that would fit under that 20% of learning loss and fit under the newer continuing needs resulting from the pandemic. The second piece, and I stated this before, but I think it is the highest percentage of our ESER dollars would fit in investments that benefit the district long-term. Think infrastructure. That could be facility needs, could be infrastructure, could be HVAC upgrades, purchase of new technologies, that type of thing. Again, I see that as the largest of the last, and I think it should not be forgotten, are the opportunities to support educational innovations. We know oftentimes that making change sometimes has the barrier of funding. And we have an opportunity to be smart with innovation and prioritize, but I think this provides us an opportunity that we're likely never to have again in our district. And I think it would, it would be a shame if we didn't have some dollars devoted to how we can improve our district and how we can take some risk and really look to how we can improve our educational system. I think of things like expanding our CTE programming, as we talked about a few meetings ago with aviation and drone technology, if there's other programmatic improvements. Mr. Gaylor gave a great presentation last meeting regarding some of the big innovative ideas, or big changes that might come through the innovation, the harvesting innovation program. I think there's a lot of really great opportunities there as well. So I would like us to think about those three buckets as we create a budget for the use of ESER dollars. We did, I know we've talked a lot about vaccinations and testing, and I'm happy to say that we were able to finally get vaccinations scheduled for our staff. And Central Valley Health has done the very, very best that they can. I know it's been a challenge for them as well, managing limited resources and a lot of interest. And so, and especially when you have a larger district. So last Thursday, we were able to have access. We had originally about 180 staff that expressed interest in receiving the vaccine, and there were 400 slots in a, in an event, at an event. And to my knowledge, they were all full. And it wasn't just educators, education staff, but a large portion was. And so, all the staff that wanted to pursue a vaccination were able to sign up and get one. We did have a handful that couldn't make that day work, so we worked with them to find a date that could. So we're very pleased about that. I don't know an exact number, but like I said, I know that we had 180 interested and only a handful that said they couldn't make that date. And I'm assuming that there was a handful more that maybe weren't registered, weren't, didn't complete a survey for me, but still expressed, but still went and received vaccination. So very thankful to Central Valley Health for that. I will say, just from personal experience, that maybe with the next round, we can hope for a Friday, so to make sure that we don't have a staff that experiences a little extra side effect, because that can certainly be a challenge. And I know that there are districts, you know, not to be funny, but there are districts that have had to cancel school because of the side effects the next day. So we want to be cautious about that as well, and recognize that some might have a reaction to the vaccine as well. And I did put this in my report, and I'm just sharing it with the board. Originally, we talked about our COVID bank and being used for a handful of circumstances. As we talked through, we felt it was, you know, reasonable to, instead of taking sick time away to be gone for a half an hour or an hour to receive the vaccine, we just filled, funneled that all through the bank. So we feel like there's, there was enough in the bank to cover that. So far, we've used about 90 days in the bank. And so there's certainly some more left, but just looking at, like I said, it made common sense to me that we would allow that time, and I think it was just a handful of days thus far. A lot of people were able to make that work before school, during their lunch as well. Later on in your agenda, you'll be receiving a request to approve a continuing contract for Mrs. Grotrie, and you might ask the question of, why is that? We just approved a contract for Mrs. Grotrie at the middle school and replaced a teacher that had resigned in the middle of the year. And just to make sure that everybody understands that, after January 1st, teacher does, a person hired doesn't have a continuing contract. In this, in this event, Mrs. Grotrie is doing a wonderful job, and we want her to come back. And so she would be, when, when you approve that contract, she then has a continuing contract, just like every other teacher working in the district. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that differentiation and why we'd approved a contract for her twice. Later on, you will be asked to approve as the Jamestown School Board. I set this aside in my report separately, just so everybody recognizes. If you aren't as aware, this board serves also as the governing board for the James Valley Career and Tech Center. And so at the end of your agenda, you'll have an agenda item as that governing board. And that's the request to approve Pingery Buchanan to return back to JVCTC. They had been a longtime member and have since moved on, and now they're coming back. So that's something that I'm very happy about, happy to have a new member back in to the JVCTC. I included some information about summer school and how we're continuing to look at how summer school is, has to be looked at differently this year. Our whole year has been different, and there's no reason to expect summer school to be different. And so we're getting a little bit of survey information, especially out for, excuse me, for, out for our kindergarten, or kindergarten through fifth grade students. We want to make sure that if a family feels there has been learning loss, that they have an option for summer school in the event that we have the capacity to do that. We just don't know yet who feels like their student is not quite there, has not quite made all of the gains that they would like. So we're sending out a, we have sent out a survey out to families to, to see if, if summer school is a need for them, and if they haven't typically qualified for summers, for summer school. Later on in the agenda, you're going to look also at e-gaming, the grant proposal there. And Mr. Gaylor, Mr. Rollson, and I had a couple of meetings with, with this group. And, you know, one of the things that Mr. Roberts asked, a great question through email about e-gaming, and one of the questions that came up was a concern perhaps with the types of games that, that sometimes occur at e-gaming. With this vendor, working through this league, the school district selects the game. It isn't a mandated game from a league. You know, the concern might be, well, I don't want my child to play, or I don't want us to use a first-person shooter game that maybe is too violent. We would get to select the game. And so then our students are placed in a league with that game, or other school teams with that game. And so if we opted to stay away from certain games, we would certainly have that opportunity to do that. And really, with co-curriculars and extracurricular, our whole, our whole purpose is to keep kids connected to school. Not every student is interested in athletics. Not every student is interested in band or choir, or the fine arts. And this is another opportunity we have to connect with students and connect them to school, and connect them to their team, to others that would be their teammates, and a sense of unity around our school. And so I think it's a great opportunity to, to, to explore that, and we're appreciative of this opportunity. I had, just, I will end with just a few different updates for legislation. I won't talk about all the bills that are in the highlighted areas, or the bills that I've highlighted, House Bill 1027, 1114, 1135, 1167, 1188, 1281, 1388, 2046, and 2215. But I did add a few, a little bit of my own perspective into each of those areas, and I'd certainly stand for questions legislatively if you had them, or if you have questions on anything else that I've covered. One thing, just to draw your attention to, that I do want to talk about, is that with our funding bill, has been amended as we thought it might in-house appropriations to a 0%, 0%, increase in both years. So just to reinforce again that a 0% and 0% is not, you know, sometimes people say, well, it's hold harmless, you're, you're staying at 0. You aren't, because your deductions, your adjustments are increasing every year. So what that really means is a net loss. You know, if you remember when we went through a 0-0 increase a couple of years ago, that net loss, when you consider enrollment decline and the adjustment increase over the biennium, was about $500,000. So it's 0-0... So it's, 0-0 is, is a net loss for us. I, I feel very strongly that that will come back in the Senate, at least at 1%, 1%. But we'll see what happens. But it's something that we need to be aware of. It's certainly disappointing. We brought up this potential last meeting because of Esser dollars, and I think the sticker shock of, of how much money the state was receiving in Esser dollars. But there's a lot of stuff we can't do with Esser dollars. Those are one-time funds, and, and we need to be cautious about Esser dollars in not replacing state funds with Esser dollars. And I think it's a myopic look at our funding, and it's disappointing, but I think that'll come back as well. But it's just something to continue to monitor. It's certainly something that I'm concerned about. But I would stand for questions if you had any.
Melissa?
Going back to the COVID sick bank, you had mentioned that they're able to use that to go get the shot. Are they also able to access that if they do happen to have a reaction to the vaccine and need to take the next day off? Is that also be, are they also able to use that sick bank for that?
So that would be a traditional sick leave for that. We haven't had that request yet, but, but, you know, as I look at that, a reaction to any, any vaccine typically would fall under a sick leave.
Any other questions for Gail?
I just had appreciated that you put in that our achievement data at this point looks like we don't have the learning gap, and I'd like to applaud all of the staff of our school districts who have worked tirelessly, and our support staff, and our paras, and all the work that went in. I'm hoping that that is not just a trend here, but a trend elsewhere as well, and I just think that's to be noted. And I did have one question, as I looked at the Esser dollars and I looked at it being able to, to be used on improvement projects like air quality and stuff like that, do we have any information about what are the air exchanges in our different buildings and in our different classrooms? I have note, I had just been reading quite a bit about it. I found it oddly interesting that there are a lot of learning outcomes that have been improved when the air quality was improved in buildings, and a really reduction in absenteeism and other issues. Just, I found that fascinating.
Asthma, impacts of those two. So yes, answer to your question is with Esser, I find everything tying together with our capital projects plan. So that'll be included as part of that. The analysis of HVAC is included there, so they, so we'll know what building by building HVAC needs exist. It'll be a part of all the prioritization. I think, as we talked a few times with, with facilities, we aren't going to have an opportunity like this. Esser isn't going to come around again. I won't be a superintendent the next time this comes around again. It just isn't going to happen. And we have an opportunity now with a, really a substantial amount of money to make some facility improvements. I don't want to get laser focused just on doing that. Like I said, I think the other buckets are important, too. But, you know, there's some projects that we just simply aren't able to do without a referendum, without refinancing. This does, this opportunity doesn't, doesn't come around very much. And so, very timely to start looking at that capital projects plan, and yes, that will be included in there. You make a great point with learning, with, with what we're seeing in our district, and I would say across North Dakota, that's really been pretty consistent, because a lot of kids have been either in school full-time or part-time in a hybrid. And there, I think we're, across the country where you're seeing that more is where, when students have been completely virtual or haven't set foot in a school building for almost a year, there, there is going to be impact. And that's been mitigated in, in schools like ours and schools like others in North Dakota that haven't seen that same loss of connection to the physical building and face-to-face with their teachers at all.
Any other questions for Rob? Aaron?
So just going to put my new guy hat on here. In context of this, the capital projects plan and, and the pandemic, would there be some opportunity to tour some of the schools and kind of get a feel for when we, you know, develop this plan and timing and priorities to actually get onsite and look at some of this stuff?
That's a great idea. Hadn't considered that. We did tours with our, with the board before our last referendum, but I think that's, that might be a good, I, let me think about how to best do that, because I think it's a great idea, and maybe start to look at each of the systems the best we can and tie all that together. Yeah, let's see how that could work, but that's a good idea.
And Roberts, some of those pictures of the ones we've taken before the referendum, are those still available, like to send to Aaron, and so he could see those, or?
Yeah, I can give you, there's a, a facility plan. It's a, not the capital projects plan, it was part of what Consolidated used to create the plan, that was done actually by DLR Architects. And there's a lot of different pictures of different systems that I can certainly give you. It's a little heavy read, it's, you know, a couple hundred pages, but it's a lot of different pictures of systems and things like that, but I'll share that with you. What's that? No pop-ups?
No.
One plays music when you go to the, no, actually, before we leave, let me, remind me, and I'll, I'll get you a copy.
It'll give you a head start on things and stuff, so. Any other questions, Rob? None, moving on to old, yep. Go ahead, Heidi.
There's a lot of interest in that, as well as, I'm glad that, to hear that we can have some control over the games that, that are being offered, and gives opportunities for students to also get college scholarships for those that excel in that area. So I'm glad we're, we're looking at pursuing that, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? None, moving on to old business, any old business? Hearing none, we'll move into new business. We have nothing under activities or building or grounds. Moving to curriculum and assessment, is there a motion to approve the 2021 summer school courses? Motion by Gail? Seconded by Jason, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving into finance, is there a motion to approve the, to submit the regional STEM ecosystem grant for the James Valley Career and Technology Center in the amount of $3,500? Motion by Greg, seconded by Melissa, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to personnel, is there a motion to approve the hire of Michelle Grotrain as a seventh-grade science teacher at the middle school of the 21-22 school year, salary to be determined upon completion of negotiations? Motion by Gail? Seconded by Melissa, any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter B, is there a motion to approve the resignation of Claudia Wolf, family consumer science teacher at the high school at the conclusion of the 2021 school year? Motion by Gail? Seconded by Aaron, any discussion? Gail?
Just, she'll be a great loss, having worked with Claudia over the years. She was a gem to work with and a really great person, and I'll miss going in and doing guest learning labs with her.
Most definitely. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter C, is there a motion to accept the letter, letters of resignation for 2021 extended contracts for Claudia Wolf, Pad Shmidberg, Cheryl Sunderland, Paul Hanson, Larry Aslick, Marcel Krieger, Bill Nelson, and Shelley Moulton?
Just a comment for those that haven't gone through this before. We do this every year. It's an agreement to non-renew for those extended contracts. It is not the regular portion of their contract. It is simply the agreement to non-renew that, that extended contract piece. Again, the continuing contracts requires us to do an agreement to non-renew.
Motion by Melissa, seconded by Greg, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter D, is there a motion to, for the approval of the board's determination of appropriate negotiation unit for the administrators? Motion by Greg? Seconded by Gail? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter E, is there a motion to approve the board's notice of recognition with the Jamestown administrators? Motion by Gail, seconded by Melissa, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter F, is there a motion to approve the board's determination of appropriate negotiation unit, negotiating unit for teachers? Motion by Greg? Seconded by Gail, or Diane? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter G, is there a motion to approve the board's notice to recognition with the Jamestown Education Association? Motion by Melissa? Seconded by Jason? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have nothing under policy, it's procedures. Under tuition, is there a motion to approve the tuition agreement for a Montpelier student to attend Jamestown Public School for the 2021 school year? Motion by Melissa? Seconded by Greg? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving into others, is there a motion to approve the instructional plan?
Just a comment, quickly, I didn't reference it in my report, but the recommendation from the review team is to continue in Instruction Plan 1.
Motion by Greg? Seconded by Gail? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to the James Valley Career and Technology Center item, is there a motion to approve the acceptance of Pingery Buchanan School District Number 10 into the James Valley Career and Technology Center Agreement for the 21-22 year? Motion by Melissa? Seconded by Jason? Any discussion? Rob?
A comment here, we do have, every time the terms of that agreement change, we have to add, and each board will act on that agreement again. Typically, we don't have any change outside of the addition to the new, to the new school, but we have gone through and made some, some recommendations for change, nothing of significance. I, I don't believe we'll go through each of those. A lot of it is just verbiage changes, non-substantive. One area that I'll draw your attention to is the recognition for, how do we recognize workforce experience for some of our CTE staff when they come from industry? And can, and providing an opportunity for you to provide years of experience for those positions on our salary scale. So these are separate from the Jamestown Public Schools negotiated agreement, but in that agreement, we use the schedule as, to determine salary. And one of the changes that we'll recommend to all of the boards, including the Jamestown Board, is that we follow that 10 years. In the JPS negotiated agreement, it caps that 10 years of experience, and I think there's, there needs to be a recognition in that document that we could provide 10, up to 10 years of experience in industry, when they're following the, the teaching, or when they're going through the, the certification to become a teacher in CTE field as well. That'll be a recommendation that will bring, you'll see that agreement in its totality when we're ready to bring that, but that's one area that we've targeted as something that needs to happen, as we've hired folks coming in from industry that have transitioned into teaching from, say, auto body or machining, and the recognition that those years of experience have value to that position. Similarly, to if a teacher comes from Hope Page and comes into the district and, and just, so you're, that's probably the largest change. Sally, am I missing any other changes? That, that's really, I mean, there's some verbiage changes. I, I've said this before, I, I recognize the authority I have as an English teacher to edit everything that ever comes before me, so I can't stop myself from doing that. It's a compulsion, I think, but, so I have some minor things that need, that I think need to be changed, but that's the largest substantive change that I see that we'll bring before all of the, the various boards.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Jason?
I was, I didn't know there was a motion on the table, but Mr. Solis, was he still going to Pingery Buchanan, or no? That, that would stay the same, once we're in this agreement. I just wanted to clarify that they're still going, they're, they're going to get our counseling and guidance services as part of this.
It's actually going to be a better deal for them, because they'll be members and not have a separate contract like they do now. I think now they'll, they'll still pay, they'll pay tuition, so they won't pay, pay that additional side contract unless they want to extend more time or request more time. But their students will also have access to all of our curriculum.
Jason?
Program offers.
And I forget, does adding a partner school increase percentage we get from the state, or no reimbursement from CTE?
No, it won't, based on that. We had, if we had only two, adding a third would. But at this point, that doesn't change, although it will change tuition. You know, if we can split out amongst more students, ours is still going to be the Jamestown, I should say, the Jamestown's. Now you're the, the CTC board, but the Jamestown's will still be significantly the highest portion of that tuition, because we see the highest number of students.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on, items for future agenda? Aaron?
Just a question, in your superintendent's report, you mentioned that there's a board education scheduled for next, for the 15th on capital projects, is that right?
Yes, I've asked Jim Paris from, from Consolidated Construction to be here and talk about capital projects, so we're hoping that the capital, so our goal is that the capital projects plan to be in a draft form by the 15th to present to the board. And then I've also asked him to provide board education, similar to what he did a few years ago in 2017, on construction management at risk and the benefits of, of operating, what construction management is and what benefits it might hold.
And that's going to be up at the library in the next meeting?
We'll clarify that. I, I think I've crossed some wires. I've, I've, I think I told Amy one date and Adam another date. So I will clear up what date it is, and I will, I will, I take full responsibility for telling two different people two different things, but I'll clear up what, what those exact dates are and locations, but.
Okay. Any other items? Hearing none, we'll move on to meetings to be scheduled. We have dollars or scholar meeting on Monday, March 15th at noon in the multipurpose room. Have the health committee meeting on Monday, March 8th, 3:45 in the Thompson Community Room. And then our regular school board meeting is going to be Monday, March 15th. And then our regular school board meeting is going to be Monday, March 15th, 5:15. At a location to be determined. Roman numeral six is to right-click on your superintendent's evaluation, and then also to right-click on our adjournment to assess that. No further business, meetings adjourned.